Good evening. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in regular session for Monday, March 5th, 2018. And ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Freeman?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counselor President Parsons?
Here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
And Counselor Anderson?
Here.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have students from Whittaker Middle School who are here for the Volunteer of the Quarter, and I've invited two of the representatives to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. So would you introduce yourself, please?
I'm Hannah Bowden.
I'm Amaya Garcia.
Thank you very much. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, tonight. There's a full house, and for a very special reason, so we're going to go straight to special orders of business. And this is the Volunteer of the Quarter. It isn't often that we, our Volunteer of the Quarter is sometimes a small group of people, a couple, an individual, but in this case, we want to recognize the tremendous contribution of the students of Whittaker Middle School, and many of them are here with us tonight. They were nominated because of the work that they've done, organized by teachers like Mr. Decker and some of the counselors, who have made sure that they have an opportunity to put all the things that they're learning about kindness and community involvement into action. They've put in countless hours of work down at Kaiser Rapids Park, planting trees, pulling invasive species, getting involved with the Kaiser Network of Women for the Giving Program, and so much more. Because of the work that you are doing as young people, you are embedding the values of pride, spirit, and volunteerism, and it is truly an honor on our part to recognize you for the work that you are doing to make our community a better place. So I'd like to invite Mr. Matt Lawyer, who nominated you, down to say a few words.
A few, yes, thank you. Gosh, Tracy even got me earlier. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Counselors, staff, for the record, Matt Lawyer, Kaiser citizen. In fact, Madam Mayor, I think you captured it very well, but I'm going to read specifically the nomination that I submitted for Volunteer of the Quarter, Fourth Quarter. So on October 28th, so this last fall, Whittaker Middle School got together with a little over 100 students and went down to Kaiser Rapids Park as part of their Service Day project. They went above and beyond by removing invasive species, weeds, removing trash, spread many, many yards of bark dust in and around, not only at the Big Toy, but also down near the boat ramp area and along the parking area down there. In a period, early on in the day, they provided more than 400 hours of service, saving the city a bunch of money and accomplishing a major beautification project for the city. In addition, it allowed the students to become a part of a volunteer project, not only for credit for their school, but also to help out in their city, and in some cases, in a city they don't even live in. It demonstrated a tremendous amount of community involvement, community pride in this service project. It is, in addition to that, even after this nomination, as you said, Madam Mayor, they came down, supported in the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum Project, and we are blessed to have on the Clyde Creek Watershed Council Ms. Miranda Coleman, who came on board as our youth liaison. So we've got her now at Whittaker, and hopefully moving on through McNary. So she's done a great job trying to encourage the volunteer work there, and I can feel the lasers in the back of my head for calling out Miranda, because I know she's in the room, but we're really proud of her and all the work. And I'm very, very thankful to Mr. James Decker for all the work he's put in and the amount of enthusiasm and passion he's brought for these students in terms of the ability to want to get together, to show that community pride and involvement. I challenged him to try to get enough folks out here for our next watershed cleanup project, and he has assured me so far that he's got between 150 and 250 potentially on target. So I'm very, very thankful for that, just continuing to show Whittaker's pride in the city of Kaiser. So for that and many other reasons not mentioned now, they were my nominee for Volunteer of the Quarter, Fourth Quarter, 2017.
Thank you very much. Are there any, I'm not sure, can you guys hear me? Okay, this isn't giving feedback I'm used to on the microphone. Are there any questions or comments from the council, Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you so much for your efforts, and I would just really, really encourage you that as you go, move on to McNary, that you would keep this up, both within the structures that are already there and on your own. I am really trying to fill all of our committees with youth liaisons, and so please come talk to me as soon as you get to McNary, and we will put you to work. So thank you very much for all your work in middle school, and please, please carry that to the next level as well.
Thank you very much. Counselor Herrera?
First of all, I want to thank Matt for recognizing these guys. I mean, Matt has a way of finding, he's got a pulse on what's going on out there, and I really appreciate that, Matt. Of course, we were joking about the earlier part, but you guys out there, thank you for what you've done for our community, and continue, like I was going to say, basically, she said everything I was going to say, but much nicer. The enthusiasm in this group has been great, and I see a lot of young people there that I see future leaders. Think about it that way, future leaders in this community, and I really appreciate it from myself. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counselor Freeman?
Well, I'll echo that, and I will put a challenge out to all the youth that are in the audience. It's not very often that we have a room full of people at council. It's really nice. So this is an invitation, but you're welcome here at any time, so please, please come back and join us, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you. I've got issues with the microphone, so we'll have to do some sharing here with Counselor Parsons, which I appreciate. So what I would like to do now is invite all of you, all of the students from Whittaker Middle School, to please stand and be recognized, and I will make the presentation of the clock. I'm going to get them as close to the microphones, they can hear it. So on behalf of the people of Kaiser, I want to present this clock as a very small token of our appreciation, that when anybody looks at it at Whittaker Middle School, we know you gave time that was of value to, for today and in the future.
Thank you, Mayor.
So first off, thank you, all of you, for your time and acknowledging these guys' great work. All I can do is give them opportunities, and when you give me opportunities, and we're going to continue to try to develop this, because the feeling that these guys get, especially when we got done, I heard from countless kids, "Can we do this again? This was so much fun. This is a great way for us to get together." Well, imagine if we can add the numbers of kids that we had and more projects, what we can do as a city, and then more importantly, to show the pride and the passion to be a part of service, and then hopefully pay this forward times 10. Then, when they become adults and they have their own families, they'll understand the joy and the passion that comes from giving to others, and that's what this is all about. So thank you for the acknowledgement. Thank you on behalf of all of these amazing kids and parents who took time out of their day to be here as well. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your kindness, and more importantly, we're just beginning. Time's ticking.
Nice. Don't forget the box for transporting. Yeah. I'm going to get that to you real quick. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amy. Thank you. Thank you, sir. As always. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
So as many of you heard, the next project is going to be March 17th, which is the City Hall Cleanup Day, so watch online for that and many other opportunities that we get together as a community to make a difference, and I'm so glad that our next generations coming up are following in our footsteps and continuing that pride, spirit, and volunteerism. Well done. So speaking of pride, spirit, and volunteerism, one of our cores is also our neighborhood associations, and tonight, we are going to hear from West Kaiser Neighborhood Association a brief report on this past year, and then the request for recognition for the upcoming year. So with that, it is, I'll turn it over for item 4B to our city manager.
And I will invite Rhonda Rich and Mr. Blake down, and feel free not to read all 15 pages, maybe just the executive summary, and you've got five minutes.
But what if we forget something?
They have the report, they've already read it, and that'd be just fine.
All right. Well, thank you so much for this opportunity to come before you to talk about our plans for the coming year and give you just a quick shot of what's been going on at the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association. I'd like to turn some time over to Rhonda Rich, our past vice president. She has some information to cover.
Okay, we're going to kind of share this, and the reason we do kind of read this, and it's not 15 pages, but it's, it'll be about three or four pages, is because the people who are watching and don't get a chance to read the report, the city council packet, we do have a website, too, but, so we'll make this quick. The background is the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association, a neighborhood association recognized by the city of Kaiser that serves approximately 3,200 households in West Kaiser. Its boundaries extend north to Chimaua Road, east to River Road, south to the Kaiser City Limits, and west to the Willamette River. The association, led by seven board members, serves the West Kaiser residents by abiding by its mission statement. The general meetings are held on the second Thursday of each month, except for June, July, August, and December. And I'll put a plug in for this Thursday, we do have a meeting, and Daniel Bethel, the executive director of the Chamber, will be there, and our meeting is at 7:00 at City Hall. The meetings are usually attended by 20 to 25 people. We meet at Kaiser City Hall. I'd like to give a thank you to Allison Seaburn and Christian Bovier, the community center coordinator for the room setup. We really appreciate that, the room here is great. The board meetings are held the first Thursday of the months of our general meetings, and we meet at various board members' homes. We're publicized through email, channel 23 Kaiser Times, Kicken City Website, Chamber of Commerce Calendar, Facebook, and the website www.weskeizerna.org. Our website manager is Barbara Smith Henke. All meeting minutes and general information can be found on the website. Informational flyers are provided at West Kaiser Parks, schools, and some businesses, and you each have one in front of you. The yard signs are purchased from pronto signs and are posted the weekend before our meetings, thanks to our board members, Art Mauer and Dennis Phipps. We kicked off the 2018 on January 11th at our annual meeting with a very informative presentation from Jill Bonney Hill, who's president of the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, and the 2018 board was elected. We have President Carol Dorfler, Vice President Chris Adams, Secretary Carolyn Holman, Art Mauer, Dennis Phipps, and myself and Gary are on the board. The complete annual report can be found through a link on the city's website and also on our website. So I'm going to just give a synopsis of that report, part of it, and then Gary's going to wrap it up. The 2017 board members were Gary Blake, president, myself, vice president, Carol Holman, secretary, directors Carol Dorfler, Art Mauer, Dennis Phipps, and Chris Adams. And I would like to publicly recognize and thank the following people, who have given of their time to come and share information at the general meetings. Counselor Freeman, she's appointed as the WICNA liaison to the city council. She attends every meeting, she shares ideas, and she and her husband Ron have coordinated the Adopt a Street program for Chimaua Road the past couple of years. Also, thank you to Counselors Roland Herrera and Marlene Parsons and Counselor Laura Reed for coming and reporting at our meetings, and Counselor Freeman's present, absence. Okay. Bill Lawyer, city of Kaiser's director of public works, updated the members on departments, five divisions, the water, the stormwater, streets, parks, and environmental and technical, and he always gets a good crowd, draws a good crowd. Matt Lawyer, Parks Board Representative, he's reported on the new parks fee and the need for citizen input, and I think we did a pretty good job there. Kaiser Police Chief John T. gave a presentation on the need for the five more officers that could be accomplished if the police fee was imposed, and he introduced KPD's new community outreach specialist Dorothy Deal, who is focusing on crime prevention and other ways to be of service through public outreach. The Kaiser Chamber of Commerce Iris Festival Chairman Dave Wallery, Carlos Soto, the festival run chairman, and Bob Shackelford, a main assistant for the overall festival. Hirsch Thanksster also attended, president of the Salem Bicycle Club and chair Kaiser, he's also Kaiser Traffic Bike Ways, Safety Bike Ways Pedestrian Committee, reported on the Salem Bicycle Club. Eric Bandonis, he's the probation parole officer of Marion County Sheriff's Department. He visits the meetings quarterly to give his report, and we really appreciate that, because he also brings information from the Kaiser Police Department. Max Cascario is one of the three parole officers in the sheriff's office, focusing on parolees with mental health issues. Mary Jo Emmett, she's the coordinator of the John Knox Community Gardens, and she shared a pamphlet from Marion Polk Food Chair about the community garden at John Knox. The state of the city, we had Mayor Kathy Clark at the May meeting, Mark Callier, we had Kaiser Rotary President, reported the project that they planted an arboretum over at Kaiser Rapids, and Dr. Jerry McGee, presented in November. Kaiser historian and self-described storyteller, and he always draws a good crowd, too. So highlights of the year, I'm going to turn that over to Gary.
All right. Thank you. First of all, I would like to...
Microphone closer, there you go.
There we go. There we go, sorry. First of all, I would like to talk a little bit about some of the things that I think we've been able to accomplish as a neighborhood association. I would like to thank the park maintenance people for the improvements that they have made specifically at the Palmasia Park. That has been kind of a focus for our group for a while, and we have noticed just recently some real improvements there, so we do appreciate that, and we'd like to thank the city for taking that attention. That, of course, is one of our focuses. We do get involved a lot with the city parks, and mainly, we get involved because people come to us and would like to request some attention, and so we help them to facilitate that. So that's one of the things that we do get involved in. We also get involved in McNary High School. We had a Delight Street group get-together, and that was held, or headed up by Carol Dorfler, and we're working with Art Mayer to try to put together something for safety reasons there at the Delight Street near the school. Carol Dorfler also, and Carolyn Holman were also involved in Cummings Elementary School, some of the beautification projects there. What I'm doing here is I'm kind of listing some of the things that we've been involved in, because I know from year to year, sometimes it comes and goes, and if we don't bring it up, it just kind of stays within us. We've also done some work with the Audubon Society. Carolyn Holman, again, was heavily involved in that. Neighborhood watch groups, Carol Dorfler, for quite some time, has been involved in the neighborhood watch programs, and so she's been instrumental in helping keep that program alive and working. Adopt a Street program on Chimaua, and Ken and Ron Freeman have been heading up that, Kim, sorry, and so they have been working a lot on that, and so we look forward to that. The Iris Festival, and, you know, been involved with promoting that. Carol Dorfler also has been working with the Little Library. If you've been by her residence there, there's a very nice display. We did have an opportunity to meet on the urban growth boundary, and we had representatives there to make some contributions to that thought process. WKNA will continue this year with the following goals. We try to have timely topics that are of interest to the West Kaiser residents. We work to improve the quality of life for the residents of West Kaiser by working with city council, city staff, and city advisory groups. We are supportive of the local pools and parks, and our meetings and activities are aimed at encouraging connections among neighbors in the community. So with that, we now request that you extend recognition to the WKNA for the year 2018.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Gary or Rhonda? All right, Counselor President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council extend recognition to the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association for an additional year, which is this year 2018.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council extend recognition to the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association for the year 2018. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for all your hard work on the behalf of the community, and we wish you all the best this coming year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And for people who want to know more about any of our neighborhood associations, please go to our website, and all three have links there, and I believe all three are also on Facebook, so it's a great way to get involved. That takes us, then, to committee reports, and at this point, I'd like to invite up Mr. Matt Lawyer to talk about the Clyde Creek Watershed Council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor staff, again, Matt Lawyer, Kaiser resident, Chair Clyde Creek Watershed Council. Just wanted to state again, because I think that any time we can get it out there is a good time. March 17th will be the annual Civic Center Cleanup, 9:00 a.m. here at the Civic Center. As anticipated, we're hoping for at least 100 volunteers, if not more, many hands make light work. Recommend that if folks come, they bring proper handware. If they choose to bring shovels, rakes, or any other equipment, that they write their name on it or make it easily identifiable, so it doesn't grow legs and walk away. And coming up, actually, this Wednesday, we have our quarterly meeting, so this Wednesday at 5:30 here in the, here at the Civic Center. Folks can come and hear about upcoming plans. And then on April 21st, again, we're looking at doing the Kaiser Rotary Arboretum Grand Opening. Should be a fun event, and we're going to talk a little about that this Wednesday. So under 60 seconds as of now, I am complete. Any questions?
All right, any questions? All right, thank you so much, and thank you for all your work. Appreciate it. Public testimony, this time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight, so I would like to offer courtesy to Chariots' Board Director Colleen Bush to come on down and share with us what's going on with Chariots. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for letting me do this on the spur of the moment. My name is Colleen Bush, I live in Kaiser. I represent Kaiser in Sub District 2 for the Salem Area Mass Transit District. I am in my second term, yes, my term expires in '21. And regards to that, there's a new government change for Chariots that was just passed by the House and Senate and signed by the governor, changing our board members from elected officials to appointed. And that will start in January, I believe. I don't know all the details, but I wanted to let you know that that was a change. And then we have an outreach program going on called A Better Chariots. Due to House Bill 2017, the transportation bill last year, some extra funding has come available, and Chariots is working on a proposal to increase services in several areas of our community, including Saturday and holiday and late night, staying open longer. Those will not start until September of 2019. For September 2018, we are extending Route 11, which comes to the Kaiser Transit Center and goes all the way out Lancaster to the end, because we have a new company coming to our area, and that's Amazon. So we're creating 15-minute service in that service area, south of Kubler, that area, Mill Creek, right? And the Better Chariots proposal is garnering public input. We have some, what do we call them, community engagement, there's some tabling events. You can go to chariots.org and find out some dates and events where you can publicly go and look at the proposals and talk to somebody about what's going on and leave your input, or you can go to chariots.org and click on A Better Chariots and read the proposal and put your input in. So the next one is tomorrow, Wednesday, March 7th, and that will be at the Downtown Transit Center at 220 High Street, between 10:30 a.m., 12:30 p.m., and 6:30 and 8:30 p.m. Then there'll be at the State and Library also that day. So there's several more, and we'll go from there. That's all.
Very good. Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Director Bush? Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for representing Kaiser on Salem Area Mass Transit. Transit is a very important part of our transportation, and you're doing a good job representing the interests of the people of Kaiser.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson is here tonight, and you're going to talk about Lock the Gate, Newburgh Drive. Come on down.
Charles Anderson on Newburgh Drive, here about the continuing traffic problems, parking, trash, all the things. We just, and I just noticed, a few months ago, I put on Next Door a picture of some graffiti that we had on MacArthur Street, on both sides of the street on that time, and they've added a new line of text to it across the top of it, and I did post a picture of that just recently on there. So the problems are continuing, and just, it's going on. I'm surprised Mike isn't here, but I think he might have had to work, my neighbor across the street, Mr. Catlow, and he just got egged the other day, and the Kaiser Police did come over for that, and so the problem is just continuing on, and I was just wondering if there's anything in the works to get it straightened around and just make it into a closed campus and take care, and finish that, and to stop that madness. It's a curable problem, easily done, doesn't cost a dime. All these solutions that are expensive and street lights and they don't really, it's a bunch of expensive Band-Aids, and so that's kind of where I'm at with it. And just, just today, I was out doing other business, and I came back home, and here's a big pile of trash, and you can actually identify the trash sometimes to relate to certain offenders. It's unbelievable. Certain milk carton and clamshell, clamshell sandwich boxes and stuff. And there's this big pile of them right there in front of the fire hydrant, somewhere near the closing time of school, which is around 2:30. So, just an ongoing problem. There's a lot of noise. They don't park on my street, but they do park on my street. I'll take that back extensively. In fact, more than they do did before. Now they're parking more on Max Court, which is a cul-de-sac there, if you didn't know. But anyway, that's where I'm at. So, I just wanted to bring that up and let you know that we're still very dissatisfied with the condition of that, our area that we live in. And it's taken a swipe out of us for our lives. I don't know if I should go here or not, but I think the last meeting or one before that, I think Amy Ryan asked me if there was a limited time that, you know, that if I'm looking forward to anything, you know, at the, like death. And it's always a race with the grim reaper for me. Well, the reason you, I think, I mentioned something, and you responded to it. It isn't that you brought it up. I mentioned that there was a limited time. And you said, is that a serious, I can't remember the exact exchange. I think it was you. It might not, it might have been somebody else. But, you know, I am in my 70s now, and there are issues. And so, I don't know how long I'm going to be here. And it just kind of, just kind of irks me that, that the place I live has been degraded. I understand you think it's for the whole benefit of everybody, but it's not a necessary problem. And it's degraded my lifestyle. It certainly has. And so that's why I'm fighting that. And, but anyway, that's about all I got to say tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm trying to remember relevance, and I apologize. I don't, I can't, I can't reference that comment at all. But I was going to mention that I'm excited that we're doing some work locally. And I personally am working on behalf of the school, school board with the bond and representing the bond. And one of the things that was really important to me, I just want to make sure you know that the conversations that you're talking about and the issues and the history have been talked about a lot. And the schools heard you. They've, you know, they reference you by first name, because you've, of course, followed our, you know, direction to talk to them. And so, you know, the school bond passing and a lot of those things going on with the revenue. McNary is one of the first on the, on the board to be taken care of. And it includes parking issues. It includes in and out, you know, egress, digress. And there's a lot of things going on, and there are conversations are happening. And I want you to know that I think people are listening. And so I know it's not fast enough for you, but I am excited to report that the conversations are happening. And I do see a light at the end of the tunnel that looks pretty exciting.
I failed to see that light. But about the bond issue, it was, we were discussing that very thing on that evening that I was referring to, and that I want to go anti-bond. And I plan on advertising for, against the bond any way I possibly can. And I don't know if it'll be that much, but that's what I'm going to do regardless.
I won't try to change your mind. And I'd love to actually have coffee with you. We could take this offline, because I think there's a discussion that'd be had of why you feel the way you do, for sure. But getting the money and the revenue in to make some changes to the parking and things like that, I think will be critical to the neighborhoods. And so, I am excited about the bond, because McNary's first on the list, and that's this summer.
Okay. So, also, nothing was ever brought up about exactly what they would do, or if they would even lock the gate if they got another parking lot over by the church. I think that was sort of the plan.
If you don't mind, let's, you and I maybe arrange to have coffee and have another conversation about it, so we can take it more in-depth, and I can share with you what little bit I know. And I sure can't speak on behalf of that, but I'm happy to help. So, let's do that, if that's, sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Oh, in terms of the graffiti, Sergeant, Lieutenant, sorry.
I like Sergeant better.
Sergeant, Lieutenant. Yeah. We'll keep you on, no matter what. Anyway, does, do you have anything, or can you update us at some point with what's going on with the graffiti in that area? I know it's one of, one of the places that hasn't gotten tagged. The original one I remember was during Christmas break. But it sounds like there's been more since then, since the winter break.
It was Nordy 14 VC, I believe is what they put on there. They also put it across the street on the neighbor's fence, which he didn't clean off. It's on a red on a green fence, plus his garage got hit real big. And he painted that. And, but the Nordy, and the one on the top that is new, the big line on the top, I don't even know how they got up there, but it's a big line of text, this high, that is in some kind of Klingon language or something. I don't know what it is, but.
Okay. And that one's new, because I know we got an update on the Christmas, or the winter break.
There's a, there's a, there's a photo, a pretty fairly clear photo on my page on Nextdoor.
Would you forward that via email to our police department, so they can get ahold of that?
Oh, absolutely. In a heartbeat. Yeah. I'll do that. I'll try to do that tonight. Also, I want to thank the police department for assisting me in another matter today. And they did. They assisted me, so.
Glad to hear it. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. So I just email or something.
Yeah.
I'll give you a call, get your number from Chris, and give you a call, if that's okay.
Yeah. The cards are in the back for all of us. Your, our.
Yeah. Go ahead and you call me, and we'll set it up. He's going to give you my number.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Anderson.
All right. Take care. Was there anybody else who wanted to address the council during public testimony?
Oh, we have cards.
All right. We have no public hearings tonight, so that, we're going to go on to administrative action. And we're going to need, Kim, do you want to pinch it? So, tonight we have the, under administrative action, item 8A, which is the waiver of the community center fee Latinos en Acción Committee, First Annual Latino Recognition Scholarship Reception. City manager.
That's perfect. Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last council meeting, we received a request for waiver of fees for the community center through Council Herrera, more or less. And we provided for you a staff report with a number of different options, ranging from tell them no to tell them yes, and sort of everything in between in a number of different iterations. You're able to, more or less, do anything you want in relation to these matters. The council has, in the past, granted waivers for events where another city councillor or the city is formally represented or a member of a group to host an event here that relates to city business and has broad community benefit. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report that we received with options? So, I see Pastor Dominguez is here. I'm sorry, I don't know if the person has come with you. Would you do us a favor, if it's all right, come on down and tell us a little bit about this program? And I wasn't here at the last meeting, although I know it was available online. But I'd like to hear from you.
Yes. Again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration. Again, this was something that we brought two weeks ago. This is a, we wanted to bring something for the McNary graduates. We wanted to celebrate, and we wanted to promote their success, which is graduating. We think that is a very important thing. And so what we decided as community leaders, we are a group of bilingual educators and community leaders in the city of Kaiser. And we came up with a plan, the First Annual Latino Recognition Banquet that we want to do. We rented out the, Roland Herrera rented out the city hall for that event on the 10th of May, from 7:00 to 8:30. We're still planning to go forward with that, whatever happens today. We're very thankful for the opportunity to invest in the lives of our young people. And as we heard here today, our young people can really make a difference, not only in our community, but in areas of professional jobs. And so, basically, what we're planning, our event is going to be here in Kaiser. We're planning on scholarshipshiping about 10 to 20 Latino young people that have graduated, basically. We believe it's a, it's a great accomplishment to be able to overcome some language barriers, some socioeconomic challenges that some of those kids have. And so we're just coming to the city council, or asking you to consider a waiver of the fee here at the city hall. And that's basically, if you want more questions in terms of who we are, we're more than glad to answer those.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? All right. Well, we are very, first of all, thank you for organizing this to encourage our students and to celebrate the students in our community. Any opportunity we can, like we did tonight with our Whittaker Middle School students, and we have a chance to celebrate the successes of our young people, I think is a tremendous thing that we can do to let them know that we notice, and we care, and we're excited for their future. So thank you for doing this.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your time, whatever the decision is. Again, thank you so, so much for, for hearing us, for taking the time. And it would be a real boost in the arm to have your support. But thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much. Yes. Councilor Freeman?
I just have a clarification. So, in the memo, it has Friday, May 10th, but May 10th is a Thursday, and it doesn't matter day-wise. I just want to make sure, whatever day you're requesting, we have it correct on our end. So I just, so it is a Thursday, May 10th? Okay. Perfect. All right.
Whatever, whatever got handed in, our original intent was for a Thursday. And I think that's the 10th of May, I believe. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The earlier group that I saw here, there was a young man by the last name Falcone, which Vicky was, the parent was right over here. And that same family has a graduate that's part of this group that we're trying to recognize. And she's been one of my peer helpers and a mentor at Kennedy Elementary for, this is on her third year. And this year she graduates. She's one of those kids that, as you can see, even her brother is helping in our community. And Vicky's done a great job with her family. And I just think that this is something that I really have been pushing for, because I think that as part of my outreach, and thanks to the help of these folks right here, we have struggled to try to have a connection between city hall and our Latino community. Now, I'm doing it through leadership for the younger generation. But this is kind of important to us, because it's kind of the first thing in Kaiser. And we feel like it's something that's kind of overdue. We want to recognize them, that it's nothing to do with separation or anything. We're trying to show people that we appreciate their struggles. And a lot of those guys, I told them, you can do it. Take it or not, you can do it. And they did. So we want to take this and celebrate their achievement. So, I would like to, I don't know, propose that we, I don't know.
Go ahead and make the motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we waive the entire fee. And the reason I'm saying this is because.
We have to get a second.
Okay. Before, I think the 300, whatever the $300 is a great, is a small amount to pay investment for our community, and as a whole, to reach out to a group population that really hasn't been connected with us. And we're trying to work hard to show them, extend a handout, as you see they're here. So, thank you very much.
We have a second.
The motion is to waive the entire fee.
All right. We have a second.
Second.
Okay. We have a second from Council Anderson.
But, yeah.
Based on, if I might, Madam Mayor, based on, on staff recommendation, are we, is the motion to waive the fee and the deposit?
No, not the deposit.
Okay.
No.
So waive the fee, so you're talking about option number?
I'm taking care of the deposit.
Which one are you looking at, then? Number one?
Yeah. The entire.
Or number?
The one that said without the deposit.
Okay. So waive the fee, and then have, do the security deposit and staff. Number four.
Right.
Number four.
Is, am I reading?
Is that the one you want?
Am I interpreting yours correctly?
Yes.
Number four. Option number four.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. So, I guess what I'm saying is that I've been coming in with the people that are doing the setup.
Right.
And I've been learning how to do that. So I wanted to do that myself, with the help of another volunteer, once I know what I'm doing. But I guess the plan was just to have the whole thing waived. And then, what is the total security for the staffing? Is that $100?
Eighty.
Eighty dollars.
It would be eighty.
Normally, that's part of the fee. That $80 is normally part of that 300 fee, at least.
I thought it was separate than the $300 fee, is my understanding.
Seven hundred and fifty dollar security deposit, which is separate.
That's what it's.
The $80 is part of the fee, the seven hundred and fifty.
No, we're just using the Iris.
All right. So, what there's, right. So this would be no rental fee, have a security cleaning deposit that is fully refundable. And so, what I understood from the motion was that just the staffing of $80, $4 at $20 an hour, to have somebody on hand.
I would say, go ahead with number four. That's not bad.
Okay.
So I guess my motion will be to pick number four, and we'll go ahead and do that with the deposit. Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for number four. Councilor Ryan, you had a question?
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to be clear. So, if we go with number four, then we're talking, discussing, raising, waiving the rental fee and the security deposit, and then charging for the staff time of the four hours. But it sounded like.
Correct.
It did sound like Roland was saying he could do the setup, and which, which would negate that $80 if he did the setup, right?
No.
Well, it would, in general, we have encouraged people to help out, but because we have trained staff who know how the walls move around, and understand, and our sound system and so forth, having trained staff on hand actually helps make an event more successful, because they can concentrate on the nuts and bolts, while the guests here can concentrate on the event. So, I would encourage us to, go ahead with having our staff here on hand, they can help just make this a more successful event and easier on everybody. And also, clarification, if I wouldn't, I'll come to you, Councilor Anderson. On the cleaning deposit, would we just take a card and have that in case of, rather than collect in advance? Or?
Give them a credit card, according to what she told me. Give her a credit card.
Right. Just a number, but not collect in advance.
Put 250 on it, and then take it back.
Oh, they put 250 on, then they take it back.
That's how it was explained.
In, in general, we typically do charge the card for the deposit.
Yeah.
$100.
250 is what they told me.
Seven hundred, but it says there.
Well, it says 300, and then it says 300, and then it says 750 refundable security cleaning deposit.
Maybe I can clear this up.
Yep.
Okay. The $300 fee is the room rental fee.
Right.
Separate is a security cleaning deposit of $750, which is taken ahead of time and is fully refunded, if everything's so. And then, normally, the staffing cost would be part of that $300. But if the $300 is waived to take the cost of having our staff here for setup during the event and after would be $80. So we figured four hours total. So.
That's four, then. Option four.
That is option.
Correct. That is option four. The only fee that would be charged at all would be $80.
Yep.
Right. So that's my.
That's your motion?
That is the motion.
Kim seconded it, right?
I know. Bruce did. Councilor Anderson?
Sorry, not to prolong this, but that's not what that says. It says, number, option number four is that we could waive the rental fee and the security cleaning deposit, but charge for the staffing.
Correct.
Okay.
So we're not going to charge the car?
No.
Okay. I just want to make it clear.
Not charging the what?
Okay, if I might, as the second.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that because it's not exactly what you seconded. Are you willing to second that?
I'm willing to sec, yes.
Good, okay.
Because, to explain my second, first of all, I would just, actually, I would second what, what Councilor Herrera said. It's really awesome to have folks encouraging our young folks to, you know, in terms of rewarding good behavior and how they've done in school and so forth. And I think that's just outstanding that we've got that, especially the outreach to our Latino community. I absolutely fully support that. I think that's a great idea. So I appreciate you all doing that. And then whatever this, whatever the rental fee is, however that works out, however much it is, I'm fine with that. And, you know, if we ever have any problems and concerns about, about finding somebody to pay for that, we know where he lives. So, you know, I think this is great and willing to move forward with it.
Okay, further discussion. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I am clear on the numbers. Thank you. I would like to just bring up for the sake of equity that, you know, we have a lot of people that request the rooms a lot. And it's, I, it's hard for us to ever be in that position where do we choose a cancer fundraiser to help or a Latino fundraiser? To me, they're all so important. And so I, but I also want to make note that as counselors and serving our community, we really don't, we really don't ever get the benefits of, you know, something, to ask for something like this. And I think that you deserve full credit to, you know, to have full use of the room. And then I wanted to be careful because of course then you got the equity issue of, you know, who do we already say you are nonprofit and you have to pay? So with that being said, I fully support four. I want it to be known in fairness, in all fairness, that we, you know, that we did discuss and talk about the different options. And I actually would like to volunteer that if, if the, if it passes, number four passes, that I would be willing to personally pay the $80 in support of your organization. And I did call and leave a message with Roland for a referral for some grant writers because I know there's some grants available for your group. And I was excited to share that information. So Roland has that information. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I also wanted to point out for the record that this is a celebration event, it's not a fundraiser. So it makes us different from some of the other events that have come to us as well. All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Address you.
Please.
On behalf of the Latino Action Committee, we would like to thank you for planting a seed. And that seed is you're planting it into hearts of young people who I believe are going to make an impact in the community. And so again, we just want to thank you. Thank you for your consideration. That's just a real boost in the arm. And we just, we just want to say thank you.
Like a mustard seed.
Would you please introduce yourself?
Will.
Thank you.
My name is Olga Gloria and I'm a retired teacher from the Salem-Kaiser School District. Both my husband, Arturo, and I taught ESL at McNary High School. And way back in the 80s, we had a program called SABE, Salem Association of Bilingual Educators. And we would honor the students with a small reception and recognition for their achievement, embracing what they've done and being part of their educational journey. And so here tonight, Kaiser, and all of you are now part of the educational journey of this graduating class of 2018 for the Latino migrant or ESL students. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much.
I would like to say something.
Councilor Herrera?
By the way, Mrs. Gloria is a grandmother of Junior Wally. The famous athlete from McNary, okay? He's only a sophomore.
Thank you so much. I lost my agenda somewhere. Thank you. That's because I gave it to you. All right, that takes us then to item 8B, a resolution authorizing the finance director to enter into engagement letter with Piper Jaffrey. We just did A. And then a resolution authorizing a full faith and credit financing for the Dearborn Bridge replacement project, declaring an intent to reimburse the city for related expenditures and related matters. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council, at the December 18th, 2017 city council meeting, the bid for the Dearborn Bridge replacement project was accepted. Now we're, we've come to the time where we need to figure out how we're going to pay for it. So the resolutions that I've presented to you, the first resolution is authorizing the finance director to enter into a debt advisory services contract with Piper Jaffrey. Piper Jaffrey will be the consultant that we'll use to put together a package that we'll take out to the market and have several different banks propose back to, to the city of what kind of financing they could provide us. The second resolution is granting authority for us to actually enter into a full faith and credit financing for up to 1.8 million for the Dearborn Bridge replacement project. As far as the fiscal impact goes, we anticipated this project coming when the 2017-18 budget was adopted. We originally anticipated the project would be about $2 million. I am happy to say that the bid came in significantly lower than that at about 1.8 million altogether. We are going to have some debt advisor, bond legal counsel advice for an additional 40,000. So altogether, we're going to be right at the 1.8 million dollars as far as the entire project goes. With that, if you have any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? All right, let's start off with the first resolution. Council President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2018, authorizing the finance director to enter into an engagement, an engagement letter with Piper Jaffrey.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2018, authorizing finance director to enter into engagement letter with Piper Jaffrey. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Council President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2018, authorizing a full faith and credit financing for the Dearborn Bridge replacement project, declaring an intent to reimburse the city for related expenditures and related matters.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2018, authorizing a full faith and credit financing for the Dearborn Bridge replacement project, declaring an intent to reimburse the city for related expenditures and related matters. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that concludes administrative action consent calendar. Council President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item on the consent calendar tonight and that's the approval of the February 5th, 2018 city council regular session minutes.
All right. Anybody need to pull it? Council President Parsons?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second. Consent calendar is moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us then to council liaison reports and I'll pick on Councilor Anderson first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two areas passed and upcoming, of course. Past, we had the community conversation about where folks were thinking about what to hap, what should happen on River Road back on February 28th. And so it was great to see everybody turn out for that. Appreciated that. Hopefully we got some good input on that. I had to depart rather early abruptly due to a work-related issue. So, but I really do appreciate the chamber coordinating that, city staff, their work on that as well. The next one will be coming up March 22nd and here at the Civic Center. And that will be on the school bond measure. So that's a good opportunity to get informed and provide your input on that. Upcoming events, I think Matt Lawyer mentioned the Cloggett Creek Watershed Council, of which I'm the liaison. That'll be Wednesday starting at 5:30 here. And I really appreciate the work that those folks do on that one. That's some dedicated people that really have got their heart in a great place trying to improve our community and look out for the environment and by doing so. Then on the March 13th, I believe that's a Tuesday, will be the next Kaiser Chamber Lunch Meeting. That's the state of the city, featuring Mayor Kathy Clark. And so we'll encourage folks to turn out for that as well. That'll be a good, a good meeting to attend and I'm sure a great lunch too. And then I'm also the liaison for the chamber board meeting, so that'll be the next morning, I believe, on March 14th. I always have to mention our upcoming concerts. So Whittaker Middle School is involved and I think with McNary High School Choir as well in a benefit concert that'll be held down at Morningstar. And I don't have the date for that, darn it. But I'm sure folks will be publicizing that. And I know they've done that in the past. It's great, great efforts that the choir teachers coordinate at McNary and at Whittaker. There's a high school, or I'm sorry, not a high school, but a group, musical group that comes from Idaho for that. One of the conductors, I believe, is the child of, I don't know if it's a boy or girl, of Marion County Commissioner Janet Carlson. Sorry?
Erica McCully.
Okay, there we go. There we go. Thank you so much. There's also coming up later in the month, something I really encourage, I've said this before and I'll say it again. It's a gathering of the high school choirs, of all six high school choirs down at Spring, that I believe is March 20th. I know we get a lot of parents that turn out for that, but I guarantee you it is a neat, neat thing to come, to see all six of those choirs come, come out for that. So I really encourage that. And it's free too, so come on down for that as well. Then of course later this week, we've got our county commissioner breakfast on Thursday and I will be at this month. And then I'm sure Mr. Wood will mention, put in a plug for his long-range planning meeting coming up next Monday. Thank you.
All right, busy time. Councilor Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank our planning department for the little community group that we had with, in regards to River Road revitalization. That was kind of a well, you were there, weren't you? That was well received and I thought we had a great turnout and great ideas. And my compliments to Shane and Nate for putting that together. It was very informative. And I listened to all this and I believe me, I took notes. Also, I wanted to remind everybody that Thursday, we're having our McTeachers' Night for Kennedy Elementary. That's the biggest fundraiser for our school. And I say our school because it's kind of my hangout now. And I want to, and I want to thank you ahead of time for getting a McDonald's on. By the way, I'll be out in the street with a big sign, light sign, so kind of making my fool of myself, but it should be fun. Also, we have our commissioners. You pretty much went over all my stuff. Commissioners Breakfast, I'll be there. Pardon?
When is that?
That's Thursday night. McTeachers' Night, by the way, is Thursday night. And I know there's a lot of events going on this Thursday night, but grab a hamburger or something. Or what I tell people is park over there and then walk over, because we're pretty busy that night. We like to make as much as we can because that supports our school and projects that we do, field trips and whatnot. Okay. Also, that same night, after that, I'm going to Bridging the Gap, which is a, it's going to be held at McKay High School. It's a continuation of our faith community and leadership community, including, I believe our police chief will be there. And some of our Marion County sheriffs, DAs, faith community. And we come together and talk about different topics from community racial issues, school issues, immigration, all kinds of good things. And a lot of good stuff happens there with the networking because then you see the other, other folks that have different, you know, perspectives. And I really love those. And I'll be going to that afterwards too. When we saw these young people here, I wanted, I got a call from a guy named Ryan Wagner. And I'm so impressed with these young people. He's senior at McNary High School. I thought he was going to do an Eagle Project and I was going to assist him. And he's already done Eagle Project, but he's putting together a group of McNary leadership and their honor society, about 25, 30 people. And they asked about doing a project at Country Glen Park, which is kind of my, you know, where I live, sort of across. And so they're going to work with John, Mr. Johnson, our parks person. And they're going to revitalize that, our, that whole area. I'm pretty excited about that. And like I say, these guys came up to me and asked me, what can we do? And that's just so exciting when you hear young people say that, man, it's amazing. But anyway, also I want to congratulate our boys who lost in the first round of the 6A playoffs to Walton. And they did a great job. And by the way, Junior Wally is.
It was the second round.
Second round, right. Junior Wally, our sophomore guy, was phenomenal. Anyway, also the Lady Celts lost in the first round to Oregon City. So, and I want to congratulate all our athletes from McNary and all the sports. I don't follow them all as much as I should, or I used to, but we didn't forget about them and we try to support them as much as we can. And last but not least, I want to thank you on a personal note on this, this issue that we talked about earlier because it's been a passion of mine and an idea of mine for many years. And it's kind of emotional for me because it's a huge step for Kaiser and not only me, but for all of us. So all you guys, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. So that's it for me.
All right. Great stuff. Council President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't have anything passed because it was quiet the last week or so. But coming up Thursday, of course, we do have the Marion County Commissioners Breakfast. We have also that night the bikeway traffic safety meeting. Also, on March 13th, we have the mayor's state of the city at the chamber luncheon. And that will be held here at the community center. And then of course, the long-range planning we have next Monday. Don't forget the Young Life Banquet is this Friday, the 9th, at 6:30. And I think, and I think that's all I have until the next meeting. So short and sweet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'm going to take a pause because you just reminded me of something. And before I forget again, because I was going to do it last time and I completely forgot, it was on council liaisons. I received a request from Councilors Parsons and Freeman to switch assignments on bike ped traffic safety and planning. And they both have requested that mutual exchange. And I would like to go ahead and make that official, that Counselor Parsons will take over as liaison for bike, the traffic safety bike ped. And Counselor Freeman will take over for planning. Okay? So I'll get that in the record before I forget again. And there's my sticky note. So there, got it done. All right. Councilor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, I started, I guess, this the last little while with the town hall with Ron Wyden at McNary High School. I went to that. And that was not as well attended by the community as I would have hoped, but certainly we had a great showing of students there. And it was a really wonderful opportunity for them to see their elected officials in, in action. And again, I'm just really impressed with how many town halls Ron Wyden has, has been able to orchestrate over the course of his tenure. And so anyway, that was, that was a really interesting experience and overall, that was very informative. There was a housewarming for the Kaiser Homegrown Theater in their new space in the Kaiser Heritage Center. And that was very well attended and very exciting to see them up and running and have that space turned into a theater. It's quite amazing what has, how that's transformed. They're going to be having their first show, the Brothers Grimm Spectacular-a-thon, or something like that. And they're going to be, the first performance will be at the Cherry City Festival in Salem on March 11th at noon. It will be part of many, many theater groups around Salem doing, doing various one-acts and so forth. And so that's going to be their first performance. And then they will be here in the Heritage Center, March 16th and 17th, 23rd and 24th at 7:00 PM. And then with matinees on the 18th and the 25th at 2:00 PM. So that is a thrilling way to start off their season in that particular space. And it will be exciting to see. I had the Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association, we had our yearly meeting on the first Thursday of the month. And we had two new people show up, thanks to our signs. Three new people, yes, thank you. Three new people show up. So we'd encourage everybody in the Southeast Kaiser area to pay attention to those signs when they go up. We love our signs. And a big thank you to the Bushes for getting those up and down and, and helping our publicity with that. But anyway, so we continue to meet the first Thursday of every month and invite as many people as can to come. And we promise not to elect you to offices or the board. Just come and find out what's going on. So.
At least the first meeting.
Well, yeah, that was a little scary, I think, for some of those who happened to show up. But yeah, so that was really fun. And then on Friday, I participated in the Read Across America at 400. And then, on Friday, I participated in the Read Across America at Forest Ridge, and that was great fun. It was just really a lot of fun, and I got to read to a fourth and fifth grade class and a first grade class, got into the Dr. Seuss, and it was fantastic. It was fun to talk to those kids and see what they do, and it was a lot of fun. Then, that night, I went to Lend Me a Tenor at McNary High School, which was their show that they had, they've just closed it. And that was delightful. It was very well-done, a lot of really talented kids, wonderful production, and really great things with Tom Kavanaugh, our new director there, and so, that was really impressive. Just kind of tailing to what Counselor Herrera was saying, we are wrapping up winter sports at McNary at this point and starting the spring sports, which include track and baseball and lacrosse, and tennis.
Softball.
Softball, thank you, yes. So, a whole new bunch of sports to get excited about at McNary, so, that's exciting. And then, finally, the Distinguished Young Women Program is kicking off with their informational meeting this Thursday at 8:00 PM. So, any junior girls are invited to come see what that's all about, and there is more information on the McNary College and Career Center site, I believe. And so, we would love to get as many young women as possible involved in that program. And that also extends to anybody who goes to private schools in the area. It's not just for McNary kids, it's the Kaiser Distinguished Young Women, so, we would invite anybody, any junior, whether public or private school, to come be a part of that, or homeschool, too. So, please, please come to that meeting if you are interested. And that's again, Thursday, the 8th, at 6:00 PM at McNary.
All right. Great stuff going on. Councilman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the community conversation, and thanks to our city staff and the Kaiser Chamber staff, and Jonathan Thompson, and just really the community for showing up and having some great conversations. So, looking forward to our next one, which is March 22nd, as Counselor Anderson said earlier. And then, just lots of things coming up. You know how sometimes we seem not really busy, and March really seems to be a busy month for a lot of us? So, the 8th, so Thursday, we have the Stormwater Meeting. And then, since I'm not on traffic anymore, I don't have to talk about traffic. But then, at 7 o'clock, is the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association General Meeting, and Danielle Bethel will be the guest. And again, thanks to Rhonda and everyone past and new board officers for the West Kaiser for their presentation tonight. And we do have signs up in the West Kaiser Neighborhood, also talking about the meeting, which is here, 7:00 PM at City Hall. And then, on the 14th is Planning, Planning Commission, 6:00 PM. On the 15th is the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. And last but not least, thank you to everyone that has already signed up and who will be, and I see Matt's already left, but for the Civic Center cleanup at 9:00 AM. And that is rain or shine, sleet, whatever, but I know last year was pretty rainy, messy, so, dress accordingly and come and help clean up the city. So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also have had a busy couple of weeks. I attended Coffee with a Cop on Wednesday, Tuesday, I believe, and wow, it was amazing. It was packed, and I just heard nothing but great things come out of that. And people were excited to be there. I think McDonald's must be very happy, because I don't think they've been that busy in a long time. Every seat was full. I actually also attended Breakfast with the Chief, which is the kickoff of the construction of the Police Department downtown and the partnerships we have there. So, excited to support that.
Oh, Salem, yeah.
Tuesday night, I also attended Kaiser Arts Commission, where we did a public outreach meeting and with more conversation for our story polls. And then, I personally attended the Dorchester Conference, where I got to meet all the candidates for governor and then Congress for our district. And then, also, we have a debate here at City Center Thursday, and Thursday's a busy night, Thursday, the 8th, for our Congressional District. And that might be interesting, because that is who represents us. And then, I'd like to invite everyone tomorrow at 4:00 at the Capitol, if you're available, for Leadership Prayer. And remind everyone that daylight savings time is this coming weekend, so we get to add some more time to our day for more meetings. No? Thank you.
We all love the time change.
It's good to fall. I like that one.
Yeah, but my kids and my pets never had a reset button.
Yeah.
How that goes. Just a couple of things to add. First, I want to thank Council President Parsons for chairing the last council meeting as I was out of town and enjoying some much-needed family time. So, thank you all for your hard work on behalf of the people of Kaiser. The Kaiser Homegrown Theater Open House, the whole cultural center there is just thriving with more and more people coming. Can't wait to see the first production there in that newly-created theater space in the Heritage Center. On the 27th, I attended the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study, or SCATS. That's our Metropolitan Planning Organization for distributing federal funds for transportation in our area. So, talking about the continued updates for the STIP, the System Transportation Improvement Plan, and some of the projects that have been able to be added in this cycle, because we receive funds for the congestion management program, CMAC, whatever that stands for. I'm getting tired.
Air quality.
Air qualities. Congestion management, air quality. Transportation has a lot of wonderful acronyms. Coffee with a Cop, yeah, it was absolutely packed, and the local McDonald's was thrilled to be able to sponsor that. Lots of great conversation, families, kids, got a chance to visit with our police officers. And as we have seen in so many situations, especially with our school resource officers and indeed, all of our public safety staff, that trust between the students and our public safety is so important for them to know who to go to when they've got trouble, when they have a concern, they know who is safe to go to and to get help. So, I really appreciate that very intentional and very relational outreach from our police to reach and connect with our kids. So, great job. I went to, on the 28th, the SEDCor, which is the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, the agricultural breakfast at Mount Angel Festahall, featuring the USDA Regional Director, and also just great networking among so many leaders in our agricultural business community. Marion County, of course, is one of the major agricultural producers for the state of Oregon in so many different crops. The 1st of March kicked off with EMWAT, the MIBLAMIT Area Commission on Transportation, and Chair Ken Woods of Dallas. And I will be going to the Oregon Transportation Commission on the 15th to give our annual report to the commission. Coming up also, oh, I also joined in at Read Across America. I got to read to a couple of kindergarten classes, which was absolutely a kick. I read Cat in the Hat and Green Eggs and Ham, and the kids read right along with me, because even though they know the story, it's just fun to hear it again. So, thank you to all of the schools who invited people to come in and read. We want to encourage every kid to read and read well. So, yep, police, fire, so, it was wonderful to have so many people say, "Yes, we'd love to come and read," and encourage literacy among our kids. Coming up, I will be going to the Habitat for Humanity Groundbreaking. It's the Women's Build in South Salem on Samaritan Lane, and I was invited by the leadership of Women in Construction. And some of the women involved with the program live here in Kaiser, so they wanted to make sure that they invited leadership from across the Salem Kaiser area. And the next evening is the International Women's Day Dinner by Women in Construction, and I will be going and attending that as well. On Friday, the SEDCor Board will have a meeting with Congressman Schrader. That had to be rescheduled a couple of times as his schedule changed due to duties back east, so it looks like this one is going to happen, but stay tuned, who knows with the weather. On Saturday, we have the Green Awards with Marion County Environmental Services, and this is when they honor businesses and organizations for their sustained efforts in making their business practices, as well as their onsite work that they do to be as sustainable as possible. The creativity that's celebrated there is amazing, especially when they have the trash and fashion show, it's amazing. What people do with what we think is garbage, they turn it into some really creative fashion statements. The, oh, and then on the 16th, we'll have the Forest Ridge Elementary School Tour right here at City Hall. So, that's all I've got on that score. So, that takes us then to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the city council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And ex-city councillor Chuck Lee used to bring up Blanchett Matters, so I will take it upon myself to do that, since we have a lot of Kaiser kids that go to Blanchett here. And their boys and girl, or men's and women's high school basketball teams both placed third place in the 3A State Tournament in Coos Bay this last week, made it into the semifinals and did really well, so that was good for them. And their musical is kicking off this Thursday, and it is rock of ages. So, they would love to have you there if you're interested, yeah. Which is kind of strange for a Catholic school to do, but whatever. So, with that, Tracy.
I have nothing, thank you.
Yeah.
Just a reminder about the Long Range Planning Meeting, next Monday at 6:00.
Yes.
It's going to be awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, indeed.
Yes, indeed. Lieutenant Inman.
I have nothing.
You have nothing.
Can I jump in there?
You may.
So, a number of folks from the Police Department also did Read Across America.
That's correct.
So, were you one of them, or do you know some of the fellows who got a chance to go?
In fact, I read Green Eggs and Ham also.
And so did I.
No, I mean, the Kaiser Fire District Scowling Contest? No. Babcock won that.
Oh, yeah. Hands down.
Babcock, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you just, did you see the pictures on Facebook? It wasn't even, it wasn't even close. So, if anybody wants to know, that was posted on Kaiser Fire District's website or Facebook page for Read Across America.
And also, Gruff the Grump was at the book, so.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I've gotten a number of inquiries from people about the trees down at Claggett Creek Park. Can you explain why they're being cut down now?
They're being cut down now for the bridge replacement that's happening starting May 1st, but the trees needed to come down before the end of February to comply with the migratory, Federal Migratory Bird Act. So, there are still a couple of trees that have to be removed on some private property that we're still negotiating adhesion for, and those two will be evaluated before they're cut down to make sure there's no nests that have to be relocated, because they didn't happen before the end of February. So, and the wood from the trees in the park is given, was given to Marion County, the alternative program, so the kids are coming out to cut it up and put it in their stock to sell for firewood next winter.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other lawyer.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Written Communications, I don't have anything to share at this time. Agenda input, March 12th, that is next Monday, 6:00, the Long Range Planning Task Force will be getting together. That is all the council members, actually, it's all the members of the Budget Committee. And then, on March 19th, at 7:00 PM, we will meet in regular session, and April 2nd, 7:00